Representative during that time during the DARE program. The reason I'm staying on that because at that time he hired my son, who was nineteen, to be his photographer for the event that you all had. Not you all, the city of Waterloo had him put on down here. Who I'm talking about is Derek Mayweather Holmes. During that time, I had found out he had been intimidating my son, giving others bad information to give to him. I'm putting this stuff together now. What I'm seeing is if he was with the DARE program then, he was very good friends with the police, one or two of them. He made a statement to a person in common after I reached out to say what was going on with you and my son. His comment back was to find me, they would find me stinking somewhere. That was five years ago. And I'm still pretty fresh, but the only reason he is is because I want him to snitch on who the police was that had him doing that to my family and my children, as well as the others who I have named like Mr. Liederman and my brother. So there's a lot of information in here that goes back to the police. Like I was talking about my landlord in Des Moines, Jody Van Belsen, who was a policeman who set the stage, got my spouse at the time mine just gushy enough to be able to put my daughter in Urmandale in a bad situation. And who helped put her there, who paid for it, was Ali Talton, who got shot in the back of his head in Des Moines in a bathroom. The person who did it was found, and after he got killed, we found out he was an informant also. So it's too much police up in this, in this machine. And in Des Moines, it's not a machine. The good people down there told me it's a mafia. And when I learned that, this has been twenty years ago, it doesn't scare me. We got some car dealers up here in Waterloo, one up here and one over here in Cedar Falls, that very much was playing that part of that game. The one I was buying my cars through, my spouse, Deatima Louise Davis, was the one purchasing them. They scared her very much, enough to when I moved back up here, one of the guys in the streets, the first thing he did was put me in the car, took me and showed me the guy's house and said, that's who's been scaring your family. We need to get to work on this, okay? Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Brian Detmer, Walnut Court Apartments. I have here one hundred and seventy-nine signatures that I collected over at the bus station the last two Fridays and Saturdays, just interviewing people who are very upset with the new bus system. I spoke to the mayor briefly downstairs and said I need to go to the board, but all those people I talked to, I promised them I was gonna be here this evening, even though I was in an accident this afternoon on the way over to talk to the general manager of Met. He listened to what I had to say, but he's gonna stick with the new system. But I just wanted to bring that up, and hopefully the people I've talked to wanna go back to the old system. Ninety-eight percent is a pretty, you know, statement, definite statement. See, I had a bad accident this afternoon, I should be in the hospital, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
You shouldn't be standing on that foot, Mr. Detmer. But I just got a quick question for you. What about, what about the, what are people upset about? What do they like about? What is it?
Majority didn't complain about the buses that used to go down the terminal, all at the same time. Now they're staggered, sometimes you have to sit down there for a half hour or longer. Two buses now don't even go downtown, they run around, and one of those isn't even up and running yet. For me, I would have to catch a bus at Walnut Court and go all the way to the old Hy-Vee, and then come back to Parker Street and transfer to the bus that used to go from downtown out to Walmart. Now I have to catch it over on Parker. I have to ride the bus an extra half hour for it to go up to the old Hy-Vee, then come back to Parker, then catch that bus for another forty-five minutes out to Walmart, and return, do the same thing. I mentioned it, in this wintertime, when you have a snowbank, and the bus stops, not on the corner, you have to climb through a snow pile to get to the sidewalk. There's no guarantee that it's gonna be shoveled. So, and there's just other points that I think are really, it's not gonna get any better. People are just very upset, and I want emergency run up to the F I L and get this wheelchair this afternoon. Because, I mean, I had an electric bike, I smashed into a park bench on the way to the meeting.
Sorry to, sorry to hear that happen. And thank you for your service, too. I see you have on the.
Thank you for your time.
So like, it's been a kind of a catch twenty-two right now, because for years, people have been asking for the bus routes to change, and then they have changed, and then it's, you know, it's, it's presenting some challenges to some people, and I think they've been trying to do for the first month or so, fare free, to see if the adjustment period can kinda work those things. So I did tell Mr. Detmer, I think they have a five-person, five-person board, if I'm not mistaken, that makes decisions, so I would definitely have a conversation, as you have been trying to do with Mr. Sturt, but also with the Met Transit Board. But thank you for being here to let us know the challenges you're having, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am. Okay, yeah, you, please, please.
I promise people I was gonna be here, so I won't get nothing stopped me.
All right, thank you. And then, okay.
Good afternoon or good evening, Councilman Mayor. I got some questions to ask Mayor Hart. Are you a relative of Rodney Anderson that has All One Grocery?
No.
Okay. Another question I have, have you or do you have an interest in All One Groceries?
No, sir.
Financially?
Nope.
Okay. I've heard some rumors are different, and that's, to get it cleared up, that's the best way to do it, is come up here and ask you directly.
Right. No, I appreciate it. And, yeah, I didn't, I don't have any financial interest, none of that whatsoever, and just to be honest, those folks that are saying that, you know, I'll say it to their face, they're liars. Not you, but they're lying, right? And I'll say it to anybody's face that tries to make it seem that I would do something like that. So I thank you for asking me directly.
Okay, next one. What's the latest on All One Grocery?
What I've heard is that there is another buyer that is looking at purchasing the place and opening it back up as a grocery store.
The city has put out a pretty good financial, I've heard two million, I've heard two and a half million. Will the city be able to recoup any of that money?
Well, regardless of that, regardless if there is a tenant in there or not, he still has to pay property taxes.
Property taxes are rebated back to probably nineteen or twenty years, would that be right? A fortune? They would not pay full property tax.
They did an entire story, entire story on that. But Noel, if you want to talk just briefly about that again.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I don't have my notes with me. The property taxes, I think, were ten years at either fifty or seventy percent, then there was an eleventh year, I think, at twenty-five percent. So it's a partial property tax, they're still paying property taxes, and some of it's being rebated back.
And some parts of the entire process was, you know, working with the House of Hope to help them to have a bigger facility where they can house more women that may need some support. Partnering with Walnut Court, who had a parking lot and moved the parking lot. Working to lower the price that C V S was charging for the property. There were a number of different things that had gone in there, and regardless of what happens, there is a store built, and there is a mortgage payment on that store that still needs to be paid as well. And so that's the responsibility of the developers, but that's pretty much where it's at from what I've been told.
Okay. We thank you for coming, you know, for your honesty and stuff on this, and hopefully we get somebody in there that'll be able to last for a long time.
And can you give that message to whoever said that about me? Tell them the mayor said, "You're a liar, and you're lying, and it's not the truth." All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dina Meerschmidt. I live on Indiana Street in Waterloo. The reason I'm here tonight is because I've been having problems with homeless people living behind my street, right off of Colorado. I have called the police department, they've been out there at least four different times to address the situation, and they are continuing to live there. They've been there since at least June. There's two tents set up behind my neighbor's house, two houses down from me. They're set off the side of the road, they have garbage, clothes thrown over the fence, they have, they've been gathering wood to have campfires at night. My concern is my property value. I have homeless people living in my backyard. There's no bathrooms, so obviously they're peeing and pooping behind my house. They have not been destructive as far as I can see, except for the fact, and I do have sympathy for the fact that they are homeless, but I know nobody wants homeless people living in their backyard. It's certainly not me. And my husband and I, we went for a bike ride on Saturday, and we went up along the dike there in Evansdale, and headed back towards Waterloo direction, towards where the rendering works place is at. There's all kinds of people, homeless people living in the woods, down back there by that rendering place. People living in empty metal containers. I just wondered what the plan is for addressing this. I also live right on the end of Indiana Street, is that tire, that old tire place that's closed down. There's a guy living in the, in the old tool shed, right there, and he's living in, sleeping in his car, in an abandoned car, sitting right in that lot. He sleeps in the backseat, has a chair hanging out the backseat, 'cause he's too long for his car, with a tarp over the top of it. There's, there's just, it's garbage, there's garbage everywhere. They don't, they don't pick up after themselves, and my concern is for the fact that it's not healthy. My grandchildren are outside in my backyard, the lady, there's one lady in the tent back there, this summer when it was hot, she was laying in her tent with the door open and her bra and underwear. And I know none of you want that in your backyards. Just wondered if there's a plan for what to do with all the homeless people that are here in Waterloo.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your testimony about the situation that you're facing, and that's one of the reasons why, two or three months ago, I put together a homeless task force with about twenty-five to thirty different agencies to try to put together a strategic plan. We've seen across the entire country, especially more urban communities, the growing unhoused populations, and so what we're trying to do is take a strategic approach, and not a Band-Aid approach, to try to help them. So we are working on a plan right now, but there's a number of different agencies, and what I'll do, I'll have a conversation with the chief to see what type of resources that our P D is given once they, the call has been made.
Well, I talked to one of the police officers, he was down on my street on Friday, he was actually down there looking for where the homeless people were at, and he told me, he said that they really have no place, nothing to do, that they were told unless it's really hot, or it's really cold, they have no, no resources to offer them.
Well, that reiterates what I was saying, in that we will talk to the chief to talk about different resources. There's a number of different agencies that we're working with, that are able to do outreach, and maybe they can go along if it's not Elevate who goes out with the police calls, but maybe it's friends of the family. But we need to take a look and make sure we give them the tools to be able to go out there and be responsive to those that go directly to do street outreach to folks. We wanna, you know, it's unfortunate, there's a lot of circumstances and situations that, as all of us know, that people are facing in being unhoused, but we are very sensitive to that. That's why we've been working together and planning to try to put together a strategic approach, to make sure we just don't put a Band-Aid on the situation, because people need housing. And so I'll talk with the chief to see what are the resources that we can work with folks as well, but also if we can work with P D to take out some of the providers that have indicated they have folks that go out and do outreach, to see what we can do to kinda help as well. You know, some of our neighboring communities in the state have taken a different approach. They have encampment laws where you could potentially be arrested for camping in different places or on public properties. We're trying to take a strategic approach before it gets to that point, to see what we can do to try to help people. And so, like I said, Councilwoman Creighton Smith is one of the chairs of the committee, and we're trying to take a systematic, strategic approach to trying to help. But at the same time, there's a number of different agencies that says they have folks that can help, so we'll get with the chief to talk about that. And then, since you mentioned the area in which you're in, we will try to reach out to some of those agencies to see what we can do.
Okay. What's gonna happen when it gets cold and they start lighting up fires back there behind our house? I mean, because I know we have a burn ban, and they're gonna, they've been gathering wood, I see them.
So what we're, what we can do is work with some of our local agencies right now to make sure that they're responsive to going out, doing outreach, to see what we can do to help find housing. And that's been, that's, you know, housing has been a challenge in this community and others around the entire country. Affordable housing, care housing, we have, are in the midst of a housing crisis all around us, and so we've been trying to work with people to help developers and help people try to put together multi-level portions of housing to be able to help the unhoused. But we do have a couple agencies that we've spoken to. Stephanie from Neighborhood Services is there, Councilwoman Creighton Smith is there, that state that they have direct services that can go out and deal with that. And then when it gets colder, we've been trying to work and partner with places like the Warming Center. There's only so much space that these places have, but no matter how much wood you burn, you are playing with life and death when it gets to a certain temperature. And so we're trying to work together, short-term goals and then long-term goals. So that's, that's our goal. So we'll get, we'll try to get some folks out there to take a look.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Renee Carson, eleven oh eight Vine, Waterloo. I don't have a complaint. I just, I just come to encourage the council and commend you on standing, you know, of sitting here and taking all the garbage everybody brings you. And I just encourage you guys, you know, like, on the day of Pentecost, up in the upper room there, stay on Walnut Court for the city of Waterloo, to keep the city moving forward, because people are so nasty. I've seen the nasty comments that you guys have to endure, and I think you guys are doing a great job of moving this city forward, and I've seen a lot going on around in this city that we haven't seen. And people are always got their mouth on somebody. You know, it's like everybody is up here drinking Haterade. They always got something to say, nasty to say, and a lot of them don't even live in this community, they're stirring the pot, they're trying to keep y'all divided, so y'all stay together. 'Cause I, you know, it just makes me sick of the slogan, "Make America Great Again." How can you make America great again with all this hatred that's going around here? For people, we're supposed to love everybody, and if you ain't part of the solution, keep your mouth shut, is what I have to say to these naysayers going around here. And in America, a person has the right to live wherever they choose to live. So all these comments against you guys, I pray for y'all, because people are very nasty. Y'all stay together for the city of Waterloo, and don't let people keep stirring the pot to start to put division between y'all to get their agenda across, 'cause y'all have to sit here, I commend y'all. Y'all sit through a lot of crap, and nobody ever tells you you're doing a great job. I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you. Only got one applause for that.
My name is Larry Summy. I live at one zero zero eight Lois Lane in Waterloo. By the way, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, for being named by your peers as the best mayor of large cities in Iowa. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Twenty-five years ago, the United Nations marked October seventeenth as the International Day for the Eradication of Poverty. The U N is seeking broader engagement from all sectors of society each year on that date, to fill the seven hundred and twelve million people still living in extreme poverty above the international, below the international poverty line, which is one dollar and ninety cents a day. To bring the urgency of eradication of poverty closer to home, Iowa State in two thousand and eighteen issued a poverty report that showed in Black Hawk County, there were nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five people, or fifteen point four percent of the population of Black Hawk County, that lived below the established, local established poverty rate. Five hundred and two were under eighteen, thirteen thousand four eighty-two were above eighteen. This year, the U N suggested that the day provided an opportunity to acknowledge the efforts and struggle of people living in poverty, a chance for us to focus on what it's like to be living in poverty, and to recognize that poor people are the first ones to fight poverty. In response to this call, about twenty of us decided to establish what we believe is the first Black Hawk County Day for the eradication of poverty. We hope that it will become an annual event, when people in our county join the people of the world to review and find ways of caring for people, joining together with each another in the world to solve this major problem, which is correctable. The day we have planned is simple, I've provided a schedule. At one o'clock, we're having a movie, an hour and a half award moving movie on the end of poverty. It shows the extensive rate of poverty in the world, especially in the southern hemisphere, especially in Africa. At three thirty, Pastor Christine Kalunas of Unity Presbyterian Church will present a panel of people who are experiencing poverty in their, in their daily lives. And then at seven o'clock, we, there's a Umaro Baldi, a fine young man, a native of Guinea Bissou in Africa. His father is, is the president of the school, he will be talking to us, led by Dr. Blackwell. We urge you, invite you all to come, it's free. If you can't come to all of them, try to come to at least one of them, I think you'll find it worthwhile. And this invitation goes to all the people here as well. Thank you.
Mr. Summy, Pastor Summy, or is it Reverend Summy? Do you, why don't we work together, if you or Dr. Blackwell, I want to work together, let's put this in a proclamation of some sort, and then that way we can make sure that we acknowledge that day, and if that's the day moving forward, we can always work together for a joint proclamation to acknowledge that day. So if you guys wanna reach out within the next couple days, because we don't do proclamations during council meeting, we can do those, so.
I understand.
Let's get one done.
Dr. Blackwell would have been with me tonight, but he wasn't feeling well. We'll try to arrange for that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'll leave this here, I'll leave some of these flyers if anybody wants to, and all are welcome, it's no cost, and.
All right, thank you.
If you come to any session.
All right. Yes, sir.
Matthew Carpenter, five eighteen Jefferson. Just wanted to thank everyone for the support. Coming up in a few weeks, we'll be open for a year at Carpenter's, so appreciate it, and thank you.
Well, thank you, and we've been trying to take the suggestion, we just work with one conference that was coming up, to make sure that we try to work with bringing people to the parking ramp and overly incentivizing people to do that, and so still a work in progress, but we heard you, we got the emails, and we're still trying to work out the logistics. So thank you for a long history and cooking some bomb eggs, so appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related
David Dreher, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I've attended some of the new school meetings, and here, there may be a roundabout at Kattowski and Huntington. Was this included in the new school bond issue? And I know you don't have the answer to that, because that, you don't have privy to, maybe privy to that. The answer I received was no from them. Therefore, this is one of the city citizens, one of the citizens of Waterloo's problems that's gonna be created, that will go on our taxes. They also want to extend from, through the Green Belt to Kattowski, another road from Ridgeway. Don't know that you're informed about that, or if you have had discussions about that, I think the citizens need to know that this is coming about for us. They also want to, what, I guess I would say, change the entrance to the school in the middle of the block, so that would block the other one, change that stoplight from a four-way to a three-way, and then put another three-way in the middle of the block to go into the school. And then you wanna put a road north through the school property and part of the city property, which is a park, I understand, a kids' park, north to Green Hill. What has the council learned of these possibilities, and what discussion has been had? What impact will this have involving the road use funds we receive that will impact the development of streets in the city of Waterloo? 'Cause if we take money to do those projects, then the street repairs are gonna get changed drastically. Like to have answers to these questions, don't necessarily like to stand here, but I'll wait.
The school is still working through it, there's still some voting that needs to be done. The city of Waterloo has not put any street plans together, any of those things, and whatever happens with the streets will come before the public in full transparency. So, I mean, what, we, there's nothing, have we decided on roads or any of those things? So we don't, we can't answer that, that's right now.
So apparently you're not in the loop as to know what these, what these repercussions may have, not only for, our taxes won't go up for the school, I understand that, but at the same time, if they do want this all done, our taxes will go up for that.
Jamie Newtonson, City Engineer. We've had numerous meetings, internal meetings with the school and their architects. They have initiated a traffic study to look at all the options that they are proposing with regard to traffic coming into and going out of the school. We have seen two revisions of that, and we have asked them to make further revisions, so that is not complete yet. Until the school vote in November happens, we don't know where they're, how the funding's gonna happen, if it's even gonna go forward. At that point, if the vote passes, then we will have further discussions with how all the road changes are gonna go out there. But again, this is still in its development phase and the initial review phase.
So.
So I guess my question would be then, is it, will it potentially increase our taxes in the city to pay for these roads that are gonna be put in, or it'll take away from the road use fund that repairs our streets? Thank you.
Forest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I too have attended many of these. I too have attended many of these school meetings promoting the new high school. I have also attended the planning and zoning meeting, as well as the board of adjustment meeting on these things. Some of the things I heard are, at these meetings, was all of the stormwater will be going to the east off of the property. Initially, they talked about it going east and west, and now it's all going to the east. And to the east, all of the stormwater goes in behind the levee. There's a levee there that is intended to keep the creek from flooding, but when the creek is up, you're going to, the school will be flooding this part of Waterloo. We are the lowest, wettest spot in Waterloo. We have proof of that, because we all have sump pumps installed, had to have them installed because of how wet it is down there. I have experienced severe basement flooding, as many others do. There are homes down there that are in the hundred-year floodplain on Garden Avenue, on Huntington Road. We are in the hundred-year floodplain. And some of the information that the school has put out has been incorrect. The piece of ground they bought, they said was not in the floodplain. But I came down here to the city and got proof that it was in the floodplain, delivered out to the school. They also said that there was a four-lane road on, on Kattowski. I corrected them at the, one of the, at the planning and zoning meeting, and told them it was only three lanes north of Huntington for a few hundred feet. So that got corrected. And now they claim they have done a sanitary sewer study, and I have tried to get that. I, as of today, I have not got it. I've only been working for a month or six weeks. But, uh, they say they have done a sanitary sewer. Our sanitary sewer in that area has never been lined, so I don't know how they can give an accurate estimation of how much more capacity we have in our sanitary sewers when it is not lined, and so they do not know how many gallons of water are going into the line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else with, uh, presentation?
Todd Obedal, one-twenty-four Amity Drive. Um, one of my earliest television memories, sports television memories, was the seventy-two Olympics and following Dan Gabel and just kind of understanding, uh, something really cool was happening. And, uh, one of my earliest news experiences that I remember was the attacks in Munich in nineteen-seventy-two, where eleven Israeli Olympic Olympians lost their lives. I remember the civilized world, uh, coming together and, uh, in shock and horror at that. I remember the Olympic Games being stopped and, uh, and memorials, uh, given, and I remember as four years old, just not understanding why this sort of thing happens. Today marks the one-year anniversary of the attack in Israel. Um, the casualty count was one-hundred times that of Munich. Um, for some reason, somehow, since nineteen-seventy-two, we're in equivocation about, uh, that somehow it was, uh, it was justified in some manner, that we are not as unified as a country or as a civil society anymore on civilian attacks that happen out of the blue. I, uh, I would like to thank, uh, the mayor and the city, uh, for flying the flags at half-staff at the suggestion of the governor. It was not required. Um, it was suggested, and, um, I can only imagine, um, in today's climate, uh, what sort of pressure there might have been to not have those flags at half-staff in memory of what happened, uh, one year ago. I would also like to say that, um, I heard, uh, I heard the mayor on the radio after the last, uh, meeting, uh, saying that the people that, uh, were opposed or had questions to, uh, the grocery store, uh, were, were engaging in unconscionable acts. I believe the acts that took place in Munich and took place in Israel qualify as unconscionable. This is just a dispute on how to use money, and two-and-a-half million dollars, uh, went out. Uh, we're talking about poverty. If we take that five-thousand figure for children, uh, two-and-a-half million dollars is five-hundred dollars per child. Um, that's a hundred-and-twenty-five bushels of corn per child. Um, it'll be very interesting to see the, uh, the sales tax revenues and the sales that took place for our two-and-a-half million dollars there. I do believe that that, those resources could have been, uh, been done differently and done better. Um, I would also like to mention that when the Hy-Vee closed, everyone up here, uh, turned to, turned to the cameras, turned towards the people here, and said, "We are going to work as hard as we can on this. We're, we're on the phones. We're talking, we're talking, we're talking." At the previous city council meeting, when the All-In Groceries was closing, we had one council member that asked questions, just one. I believe that, uh, this is something that it, that we shouldn't just wish away, um, as much as the developer would like to tell, tell supporters that anyone that doesn't follow his line, as far as what happened and what should happen, um, should just be ignored. That is not a civil society. We need to discuss. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just for clarification, it seemed like I made comments about Munich and all those things from that, and I didn't make any comments about that. So it came, kind of came right after you said that, but I think you were talking about the grocery store, not about the international conflict, so I just want to clarify that. Um, anyone else want to comment? City council? Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I just had a question for, for Noel on, on All-In, and just to clarify for Mr. Nathems. I know Noel doesn't have his notes with him, but the rebates for ten years at eighty percent and the eleventh year at twenty-five percent. But my question for Noel is, is that in our last development agreement, when we changed the rebate schedule, going back to the, the developers of All-In, to the, uh, credit union that, that loaned them the money, so they get the rebates now, it said that we were, that they were going to maintain for, to get those rebates, they had to maintain four million dollars of assessed value. Currently, the, under, on the Blackhawk County, uh, website, their assessed value is three-point-nine-five million. So do they qualify for the eighty percent tax abatement since it's under the four million dollars, or do we have to wait until their assessed value goes up to four million?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I have to double-check. I think there's two or three parcels that they're split into, and the total of those are four million. So they'd be eligible for the rebates. I'll verify that.
Please do, because I didn't realize that you could, you could have one property split into three parcels.
Yeah, the, the assessors do it all the time.
Okay, so, but when you looked at their total property taxes, that's based on all three parcels, correct?
Correct.
And the total property, and their assessed value based on that total property taxes, I'm assuming is all three parcels to the three-point-nine-five million. But if they don't make the four million, do they not, do, do they qualify for the eighty percent?
They would not. They have to be at the minimum assessed value.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, just want to give a shout-out to Jessica Rucker in Main Street for the Dinner on the Bridge this past, uh, week. It was, uh, incredible time. They spent a lot of time, uh, working on that event, and we have some volunteers that are out there as well, so we want to thank you for your leadership and your efforts, and I thank you to do a responsibility with Oktoberfest as well. Um, and, um, we had a day of service as well a little while ago with our, um, city staff members getting out into the community, volunteering, uh, for different things, and answering that call that we made at the state of the city last year to see what we can do to get back to our local community. So I want to thank everyone for their efforts, the mayor's fun ride. Um, I had to walk a lot, um, but I did get there to the finish line, and, uh, I did come in last. I probably could have beat Duncan, uh, but I, I came in last, uh, this year as well. So just want to thank everyone for all of the volunteering and service that you're doing throughout our community.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of, uh, one A-one bills payment, uh, for October seventh, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of nine million, eight-hundred-sixty-one thousand, two-hundred-twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to consider, uh, twenty-one separately on the consent agenda.
So we have a, um, motion, uh, to approve all of those items for the consent agenda, and we're moving, uh, number twenty-one, uh, to be voted upon separately. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Okay. I got her yes. Uh, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And really quickly, okay, yeah, you can do it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the change order with ITG Communications LLC of Hendersonville, Tennessee for a net increase of twenty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and four cents in conjunction with the FY twenty-twenty-three construction of Fiber premise feeder distribution and backbone network project contract number ten-eighty-eight, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second.
Okay, so what I wanted to ask about, uh, because this, this happened in my neighborhood. I, I actually sent pictures of Randy when, when the, the, the large distribution box or whatever they call it got, got hit by a, a hit-and-run driver and, and drug it down through the ditch. And it's, to repair that, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, I know these guys are out of Henderson, Tennessee, you know, or Hendersonville, Tennessee. I don't know how much snow they get down there, but that, that box right now is located right on the edge of the shoulder of Dyzer Road. That edge of the shoulder, Dyzer Road gets plowed with, with road graders, and then they come back and they use their, their wing blade to push that shoulder back, which means they're going to be pushing hard-packed, heavy snow into that box. We don't, the, these things are really, really, some of these areas are really close. There's a box over by Mr. Nichols's house between Mercedes and, and South Fork. That's three feet from the road, and it's the same situation. They use a road grader on Shallas, and then they use the wing plow to push it back, so they have space for the next snow removal. What I don't want to incur is one of our city, our hard-working city employees that are, that are working all hours of the day and night in a, in a snow emergency, taking that box out, and then we're up and running, and all of a sudden, we, we're at twenty-five thousand dollars for another, for the, for the repairs, as well as the service outage that that's going to cause until those repairs are made. What can we do, uh, and for, in your department or your area, to, on some of these areas where these boxes are located so close to the road, or right on the edge of the shoulder, where we have a lot of heavy snow incidents in that area, to, to assure that this doesn't happen?
Yeah, Eric Loggie, General Manager for Waterloo Fiber. Um, so one thing as a result of this that we've been looking at is either putting up some kind of barriers or working with Magellan if some of these boxes or splitter cabinets need to be moved back a little bit, um, away from the road, so.
And, and maybe, maybe you, you know this, but, or, or Mr. Knutson, what, uh, the city right-of-way is how many feet in most places? It varies, I'm sure.
It varies all over.
Okay. But I, I, I think that prior to, you know, getting up and running in, in some of these areas, that we really need to get up and running, because they're, they're in, they're in zone one. But if, but if we're going to have an area where, where we're going to have an incident in snow removal, I, I, I think we need to be more proactive, whether it's bollards or whether it's moving, moving the boxes back, even, even putting a reflective flag like we have on the, on the, uh, uh, fire hydrants, so that our guys at night, when we're plowing, know that there's something there.
Yeah, so we're, bollards is one of the things that we are looking at. Bollards are some kind of a concrete barrier that could protect those boxes, and like you said, some additional visual kind of signage.
Okay. Well, we're running out of time before winter. That's why I'm bringing it up.
And is, uh, um, are, are they aware of it? Are, are, are consultant, they're aware of it?
Yep.
Yeah, we need a plan of action, so, thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, sir.
Plan of action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Was there any insurance that could be collected on that accident? Since it was hit-and-run up, was there anybody ever charged with?
Um, nobody was charged. They, I think the police, uh, looked into it, couldn't find out who the person was who did the hit-and-run, but we'll be putting it through our insurance.
Okay, so, so this is an additional money? This could be potentially insurance money that would be collected.
Correct, yep. And the change order is just purely in addition to the contract, so it could get reimbursed with insurance money.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, when this first came to us, I immediately contacted Randy and asked the same question about bollards, if that's something to possibly put up. For insurance purposes, is there any way to get some type of camera around these things? So they're going to be quite expensive to deal with if this does continuously happen, so is there any way we can get some type of surveillance on these particular things like we have in the recycling areas?
Well, and, and I would assume, you can go up to her, but I would assume, but one thing about getting this fiber and stuff in the ground will give us greater access to have cameras and things like that. So once we have the fiber, then we can have some of these areas, um, looked at, but I don't.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we have three new appointments. Kenneth Motzinger, Stacy Wright, and Justin Wolfson. Are you, either of you here?
Kenneth Motzinger.
Well, we want to thank you so much for being so sharp, coming to this council meeting, and so, um, look forward to working with you, GIS. That's a, that's a big deal, uh, and we want to stay on top of it. So you, you definitely have a big job and a big role with the city, but we thank you for joining our team as well, so appreciate you, so welcome.
All right.
And then we have, uh, Emily Saliga. Is that, did I pronounce that right? Uh, yeah, well, until I saw Chicago Bears, so, okay, I'm sorry. And Don Patnold as well. Are you here, Don? Uh, Ev stepped up to, uh, join our, um, Main Street Waterloo Board, and I hear you'll be having the chair-womanship here pretty soon, right?
I'll see you, Jenny, right?
All right, so thank you so much. We know, if you've been to any of the events, or you walked past planning and zoning, we've seen you volunteering, or we've seen you working, uh, as well, and anybody that takes the, the effort, forget the volunteering, but working with Noel, we want to thank you, so, so, so congratulations. All right. Number one, public hearings, please.
Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for asbestos abatement services contract number A V dash two zero two four dash zero nine dash zero seven P.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wants to make comments about, uh, asbestos abatement going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file, uh, the, nope.
Second.
Make motion, close the hearing, sorry.
Second.
Just close it. Let's close that door. All right. That motion's been made, uh, with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Okay, our estimate was thirty-five thousand dollars. Our first bidder was All-Star Environmental LLC of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was thirty-four thousand dollars, or thirty-four thousand, ten dollars, excuse me. Second bidder was Site Services Incorporated of Algonah, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount is forty-five thousand, nineteen dollars. Our third bidder is Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount is twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-forty dollars. Our next bidder was R E W Services Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount is thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-fifty-seven dollars. Our second-to-last bidder is AAA Budget Environmental Incorporated of Monticello, Iowa. is Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $28,700.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Advanced Environmental Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $28,700 in conjunction with asbestos abatement services contract number AB-2024-07-08P for properties located at 1335 Mulberry Street, 724 Lincoln Street, 418 Oak Avenue, 10 Chestnut Street, 318 Brat Knobber Streets, 309 East Second Street, and 1130 Commercial Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That's 1103.
1103, sorry, Commercial Street.
We don't want 1130.
No.
All right.
No, sorry.
Duly noted. All right, and that's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, good work. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's for the fiscal year 2025 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Wetland A Restoration Contract Number 1109.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Wetland Restoration going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Quick questions, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just for Mr. Knutson. I'm curious, because this has come before us in the past and we didn't get bids, and now we finally got bids, seven of them to be exact, and it's really low. Was there any changes made from the original proposal that went out for contract to this one?
Just in the completion date, was we looked at it a little bit there. So, otherwise, it was, and we made sure to contact contractors to make sure that they knew about it. So, between those two things, we were able to get the number of bids that you see.
Well, thank you, because I'm really glad to see seven bids and the price that it came in on.
The good news is, this is part two of three for this wetland restoration because the bids came in low enough. I have to go through the numbers yet, but hopefully we can get part three done yet this year and be done with this, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
All right, our engineer's estimate was $600,000. Our first bidder was Shift General Contracting of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $349,172.14. Our second bidder was Veath Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $409,400, excuse me, $409,478.43. Our next bidder was Veracity Excavating of La Porte City. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $472,867.73. Our next bidder is Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $378,657.48. Our next bidder is Peterson Hudson Hardware Plumbing and Heating Incorporated. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $420,966.45. Our next bidder is Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC of Cascade, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $479,707.93. Our second-to-last bidder is Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $474,369.56. And then our final bidder is Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount is $425,879.94.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the resolution approving award of bid to Shift General Contracting of Cedar Rapids, Iowa in the amount of $349,172.14 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2025 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Wetland A Restoration Contract Number 1109.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Could someone take one, two, three? Yeah, sir?
I move to adopt the following resolutions, approving a primary highway detour agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the use of city streets to detour traffic from the ramp to US 218 northbound at Broadway Street in conjunction with the Bridge Repair Project Number MB-218-2521187-77-07, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. A resolution approving an agreement with Mid-American Energy of Des Moines, Iowa, in the estimated amount of $595,271.60 in conjunction with the gas main extension to service South Waterloo Business Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And a resolution approving supplemental agreement number three with AE Comm. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $66,800 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 La Porte Road Improvements Phase One Contract 1016, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these three items? Counsel?
Mayor?
Sir?
Question on number two. And I don't know if it's for Mr. Knutson or Mr. Anderson. And it has to do, this is a utility tariff. So basically, we're paying upfront, and then we're going to hopefully get money back on the back end when we start signing people up. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I sent Mr. Anderson an email asking these questions this weekend, so hopefully he's got the numbers for me. But, you know, we spent close to $900,000 plus, I think, out there by the airport. And I'm curious on how we're doing on the payback, because we've got only 10 years to collect that, and so we've got to get buildings up and buildings using the utilities in order for us to get our reimbursement back for what we put in. I don't care who's dogs.
So you said the airport or?
Well, out there, off a warp drive area, when we extended that gas main, I thought that was close to $900,000.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, we just talked to Mid-America just a little bit ago this morning. They actually do the audits and their reports on those in November, so we should be getting the numbers fairly soon on that one. But we should, we have gas and electric out there that we'll get some numbers on very soon.
Do you know, and it says in here that the rebate is everything less the cost of the fuel. Do you know what the difference is in what they're charging and what the cost of the fuel is? So, because that really affects how much we're getting back.
Yeah, I haven't not seen a report yet. I don't know that difference. We can definitely find that out when we get it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel, on these three items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, could someone take four, five, and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution managing the professional services agreement with NutriJet Systems of Hudson, Iowa, to extend the contract for a term of five years in conjunction with the bio solids management storage land application with no increase to the current contract rate, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number five is adopting a resolution approving supplemental fiber project reimbursement agreement with Waterloo Municipal Communications Utility Waterloo Fiber of Waterloo, Iowa, estimated to be in the amount of $18 million in conjunction with the fiber project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number six is resolution approving a development agreement with ACO Construction LC for the construction of two single-family dwellings located at 4429, 4455 Charm Drive, including a $5,000 incentive for each dwelling, for a total incentive in the amount of $10,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these items?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. On number five, originally this was 20, so now is this total going to only be 18? Is that my understanding? 18 million? And is that subject to change again?
Bridget Wood, City Finance Director. The 18 million is just the fiber utilities portion of the 20 million that was issued. The other 2 million is the city's portion. So, no, it will not be reduced.
It's still 20 million?
Yes.
Okay, can they change that 18 and ask for more?
This is an estimated amount, so they're estimating it to be that, but we're not, we can't go over 20 million because that's all that was issued.
That's all that was in there. That's all that was part of the 80-plus percent of the people that voted. The 18.
So 20 million is the cap?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, anyone else with questions? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
So I'm trying to get caught up on this. This is paid over the course of 23 years?
Yeah.
Is that correct? And that's, that money comes from what, the payment?
Bridget Wood, Finance Director. So, the way this is set up is that the fiber utility will be paying that money to the city to make those payments on that general, that bond issuance.
So that's, it seems like a lot of years, but is that common?
A typical bond issuance is 20 years.
Okay, perfect. All right.
And the sooner they're in the ground, the sooner they can start selling the service, the sooner they can start generating some revenue to pay us back.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozen?
So, Mrs. Bridget, how much has this increased our debt service levy, adding that 20 million to our bond?
I would have to look at the forms that we filled out for the state. I don't know offhand.
Okay. And it really doesn't start till, we don't even receive our first payment till December of 2027.
Right.
So technically, it is still 23 years, but I'm just curious, could you get that information back to me on the debt service levy? And as these payments come in, how that affects our debt service levy also? I mean, I just should like to see where we're at, because we've got a tough budget coming up next year.
Right.
Thank you.
And the more people they sign up, the more money and quicker they could retire that debt. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, could someone take seven, eight, nine, and 10, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G in an amount not to exceed $3,200 to complete a Phase One environmental site assessment for properties located north of 1650 Idaho Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. A resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G in an amount not to exceed $3,200 to complete a Phase One environmental site assessment for properties located at 1651 and 1659 Sigmour Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Resolution approving an agreement with Mid-American Energy Company of Des Moines, Iowa, in an estimated amount of $11,785.67 in conjunction with the gas main extension located along GT Drive, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. A resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G in an amount not to exceed $3,200 to complete a Phase One environmental site assessment for a vacant property located southeast of 1907 Blackhawk Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these four items?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. What is an environmental site assessment?
Noel, you want to break that down for Mr. Dryer?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So anytime you're buying property by state code of Iowa, it's advisable to do a Phase One environmental site assessment. The Phase One is basically a written report on uses on the site, past and present, to check for any potential environmental concerns.
And this is, we used to use Howard R. Green for these?
We had a grant for these. We are in between grants right now for some of our acquisitions, but we'll be moving to have another one in place soon.
I didn't ask you that.
Sorry. Yes, Howard R. Green used to do them. Now it's Impact 7G.
So to boil it down, it's basically to find out if there's any environmental hazards there, buried cars, or buried people, or whatever.
Or treasure.
Well, caught me in that.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. All right, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Raise is only in if it's buried treasure. Can someone take 11 and 12?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is resolution approving the assignment of development agreement with BCS Properties LLC and GAC Real Estate LLC and Lincoln Savings Bank for the development agreement originally approved on July 3, 2019, in conjunction with the development of property located at the northeast corner of Highway 63 and Ridgeway Avenue, assigning the rebates for the project to Lincoln Savings Bank, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 12, a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement with Galactic Development Corp. for the property located west of 1101 Van Miller Way in the amount of $699,900 plus up to $2,000 in closing costs, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Yes, sir.
Me again. David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I guess I don't, I got back into the council packet. I don't understand why whoever owns that property already doesn't have to do something to abate the water, and we, or I guess that's what I'm seeing here, possibly affect on the neighborhood used to improve drainage in the area. Would it not be to their best interest for their own property? Why do we have to buy it to improve it? Oh, wait, future economic development, right? Yeah, we got too much of that already. Thank you.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. This project is to purchase about 14.2 acres of property that sit on a drainageway on a creek that runs down from Audubon in that residential area through this particular neighborhood, south-north past San Marnon, down along Forest Street, and eventually across 63 and all the way out to Blackhawk Creek. So, we are experiencing flooding downstream in these neighborhoods, and one way to prevent that is to create a large detention basin in this area between Highway 20 and San Marnon, and hold the water back in that area and let it out slowly to help the water downstream so we aren't overwhelming neighborhoods and our storm sewer system. So, this is going to be a win-win for not just the city being able to hold this water back and protect all our downstream folks, but the neighbors that are living downstream will see a lot of benefit from this as far as not having a large amount of water coming through this area, coming through their neighborhoods.
Jamie, how's this being paid?
It's about a $3 million project right now. We're getting about half of it paid for with SRF funding, which is state funding, and the other half is coming from the stormwater fee that we all pay to help make these improvements to our stormwater water sheds.
Was this part of your 20, 30-year vision you had?
This is, this is one of them, yes. This is, this is one of the projects. It's just taken a while for us to get it to this point. It's just, it's just taken longer than what we'd hoped, but yes, this is one of the projects that several years ago, when we asked, when I came to council and asked for a raise in the stormwater fee, this was one of the things to help, one of the projects to pay for.
Yeah, it's taken a while, but it's here. And the residents, neighbors, and folks, businesses will greatly appreciate it. Mr. Dillivoe?
Forrest Dillivoe, 1725 Huntington Road. I have a question on number 12. Looks like we are purchasing that property for roughly $700,000. I assume that's for future development. What is the assessed value of this piece of property? How big is it? I don't have anything on this that tells me any of that. How big, and what's the assessed value?
Noel, how big, and, or Jamie, one of you. Or you both can go up there at the same time.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. It's about 14.2 acres, so 700,000 divided by 14.2 comes out to what, about 15, 50,000? Somewhere in that neighborhood. So, it's not, and Mr. Anderson can get up and talk about that, but the actual cost for the property, you're but the, the actual cost for the property, you're not out of line with other property or other sales in that area, as well as the property that's been purchased by the city on the south side of Highway twenty in Ainsborough. And this is not developable land. This is, this is going to be a large wet basin for stormwater, for not just the Audubon area, but also the areas that will be developed eventually between B G M and West Fourth Street, and then it will also help protect residents downstream.
Sounds like a lot of money for wetland.
To protect folks downstream.
So they won't have wetland. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Childs?
I just had one question on number twelve. And, and the, in the agreement, buyers agree to do the following activities on the property within five years of closing. Build a ten-foot maintenance trail around the facility that could also be used as a walking trail. That's great if we're gonna start building trails around these wetlands, so that people can utilize them, but I just wanted just some clarification on that.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, as part of the project, we are already going to build a ten-foot maintenance trail. This, wetlands need, as strange as it sounds, wetlands need maintenance, especially when you're building them. Mother Nature didn't create this. We are going to be creating it. So, we are putting a maintenance trail, ten-foot wide maintenance trail. It won't be paved, but it will be a, a trail that maintenance departments, leisure services, public works, sanitation can get in there to do, remove any unwanted volunteer trees, do some mowing, things like that. So we are planning to do that already as part of the project.
It does say that that can also be used as a walking trail.
Yes, it will be, it'll be, it's designed to be a trail as well. We just are not paving it at this time.
Great.